Welcome ladies and gentlemen to the City Council Committee. Tonight's proclamation is being given to Jean Sigler. The City Council is pleased to give this proclamation to Ms. Jean Sigler for the work that she has done for the city of Long Beach. Ms. Sigler has been an advocate and community organizer before the term community organizer was a thing. I personally met Ms. Sigler at many of our council meetings where we would sit in the corner, right over there, we'd smile or we would release a heavy sigh at the things that were occurring. I've learned quite a few things about Ms. Sigler's life that you should all know too. Originally, she was a member from Real Valley. She worked at the Foreign Central Federal Savings Bank. She was the first African-American woman and president and chairperson of the Long Beach Housing Authority. She was an employee right here in City Hall for over a decade. Ms. Sigler has done a lot of firsts. Pioneer in getting the MLK Center gift over advocacy with Ken Do, now known as the EOC in Niola. She was also the organizer for Long Beach's First Chapter NAACP. She was one of the first African-American business owners in North City. She owned a restaurant on Magnolia Park and Park that was called Paramore. For all those on the Island of Long Beach page, that's the answer. There are many stories I'm sure all of you here tonight can tell about this fine woman. I am honored to present this proclamation during recognition of Black History Month to Ms. Jean Sigler.
First, let me say to the council, your golfing is a gift I will always share here, and I am touched beyond words. Thank you very much. First and foremost, allow me to congratulate our elected City Council members. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I want to thank the City Council and everyone that participated in making this event possible. Also, thanks to the ones that found not robbery to come and support me on this occasion. February marks Black History Month, a tribute to African-Americans, men and women who have made significant contributions to America and the rest of the world in the fields of science, politics, laws, sports, the arts, entertainment, and many other fields. It is also a time to honor and reflect all the struggles throughout our history of people that came before us hoping our lives would be better. While Black History Month is synonymous with fighting figures such as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Harriet Tubman, Rosa Parks, Muhammad Ali, Jackie Robinson, and Langston Hughes, there are countless others who have made profound impact in African-American history. Even though we were in bondage for centuries, we must not allow those experiences to continue to hold us hostage. We can't make today better if we live in yesterday because yesterday was for learning and today we must use what we learned. To that point, in order for our Long Beach community to succeed, we must come together as one city. It's when we as a community stand together, we get freedom from all types of negativity. Unity is the key to bridge the gap between love and hatred. Therefore, I appeal to the city of Long Beach and its residents to come together as one city. Lack of transparency, discrimination of any type, barriers, and lack of quality of life for all should not have a place in our community. I believe our City Council is in a very unique position by reason of several newly elected members. I encourage and support you to do the right thing for the betterment of our community. These accomplishments could be the beginning of a new Long Beach filled with love and empathy regardless of our race, our religion, and our gender. In conclusion, allow me to thank you for your recognition of my time and efforts here in Long Beach because I care. Thank you.
Just one more thing, we've been working on some collaborative efforts. I'm going to introduce Anne Conway from our school board. So this is the butt team from Beach to Bay Civic. Is he over? This is O from the North Park of Third Citizen. Back to where you're going. And Ms. Jean Sigler from the...
Star.
Star, I'm really just looking for her. And some young children from our middle school. And Ann-Mother Smith. And talk about what we're going to do for something else for Black History Month in a very significant day known as June 18th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jean Sigler. I appreciate that. Good evening, everybody. And as we all know, it is Black History Month, and it is a perfect month to discuss something that I know that our children and our community will really love. We are here today to talk to you about Martin Luther King Jr. is one of the most respected, most well-respected men of our time. His whole life was dedicated to teaching all of us how to love and respect each other regardless of our race, ethnicity, or our culture. Martin Luther King Jr. came to our city in 1958, 1965, and in 1968. He met with some of our city leaders and marched peacefully with our citizens. Not many in Long Beach know this, and as Martin Luther King once said, "The time is always right to do what is right." Therefore, we request that a plaque be installed in our boardwalk on Riverside or by Ed Works that commemorates Martin Luther King visits to our city. The future of our community lies within our children. They deserve a community that fosters their growth in character through love, honor, and respect. Therefore, we as community members, standing together and asking cooperation from our City Council and our school district, ask that on June 19th, we get to put a plaque up on our boardwalk that shows that our community of the Long Beach Barrier Community honors and will never forget the lessons of Martin Luther King. Now I have with me today some very important citizens in our Long Beach community. I have Sophie Conway, Jean Sigler, Louise Walsh, and Frankie Keller. So I'm going to let Louise Walsh speak first.
So you know my name, Louise Walsh. We're all eighth graders at the Long Beach Girl's School, and I'm representing them. In my school, I've worked out making Black History Month recognized by putting up recognition around both of famous and not so famous activists, poets, singers, and artists. Making Black History known is very important to me because I was taught at a very young age to love everyone. That was the message of Martin Luther King. Having a plaque with your cooperation would show the value and knowledge along with citizens and visitors, but will show visitors that we have much respect for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Hi, I'm Frankie Keller. I believe that Martin Luther King Jr. was the most important voice in civil rights. He taught us that violence is never the answer. He believed that all children should learn together and play together. He was arrested so many times for fighting for our equality, but was determined to keep on going. Today, we go to schools that are accepting of all because of Martin Luther King's hard work. I believe Long Beach needs a plaque respecting this legend on our boardwalk for everyone to see. Thank you.
Thank you so much, City Council, for giving us the time to speak, and we hope to honor our request. Thank you.
Good evening. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, February 18th, 2020 at 3:00 p.m. On the long walk, Councilmember Delory.
President.
Councilmember Vando.
President.
Councilmember Tresson.
Here.
Vice President DeGass.
Here.
President Vando.
President.
With the record in the hand, the President of Happy City Manager John Landa and Happy Corporation Council Rich Geller as representatives of the flag.
The United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, good evening, folks. Welcome to everyone's favorite Tuesday evening. We'll start tonight with a report from our City Manager.
February continues Black History Month. You can join friends and neighbors at Long Beach Cinema 4 next Thursday, February 27th at 7:00 p.m. for a previewing the period. The Oscar-nominated film depicts the extraordinary tale of Harriet Tubman's escape from slavery and change of fate as one of America's greatest heroes. Unlimited tickets will be available at Recreation Center and MLK Center starting tomorrow. Regarding the boardwalk light fixtures, Sternberg, the boardwalk light installer, will be sending us four replacement fixtures, 242 lanyards, and six easy hang retro fixtures, and a means to remove the hinge pin. Our intent is to see the fixtures up safe and secure. Once the six retrofit kits and lanyards are installed, we will monitor the effects of the retrofit. Once comfortable, we will have Sternberg supply the remaining kits and reinstall the remaining light fixtures. Separately, in an ongoing later matter, two light fixtures at the recreation campus between the Road Ranger and State Walk are being replaced. The steel poles corroded at the base from 20 years of saltwater and wind are currently being replaced with fiberglass with Ozend by our contractor, Oba Back. Long Beach has been named the 17th safest city in the country by OneStarter.com using crime statistics from FBI databases. It's one started by the Long Beach has low violent crime and low property crime when compared to the rest of the nation. I'd like to thank Commissioner Tagley and our Long Beach Police and Civil Police Department for working every day to keep our city safe. Census 2020 begins on April 1st, 2020. Every 10 years, beginning April 1st, the U.S. Census Bureau conducts a count of every individual residing in the United States. The data collected through the Census impacts everything from funding, infrastructure, community development, block grants, to our elected representation in Albany and D.C. As we are considered a hard-to-count community, we could lose resources negatively impacting Long Beach for the next 10 years. Visit longbeach.gov/censusmoremore to take the pledge to fill out your census application today. The City's Complete Count Committee, tasked with census public outreach, will host a Census One on One Public Information Session on March 5th at 6:30 p.m. here in the City Council Chamber. The session is open to the public, and we'll discuss the importance of census and what you can do to ensure you, your family, and your neighbors will count in 2020. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Tresson, heads up the City Council today.
I know it feels like the Liz Tresson Show, but during this week, I met with Gemma from the Library Board along with Anne Conway and Tara, our new library administrator. And we met with the Long Beach Robotics Team to make presentations on their recycling efforts as we are each community. The City Council is extending their support to our state legislators as they work on extending the food program for our seniors. Just a reminder, as John said tomorrow, and Brian correctly come wrong, the CRS meeting is tomorrow evening? So the CRS, if you... and please take the survey. It's online, and it's also in Spanish. And again, I'm also going to ask that everybody like the Long Beach Facebook Census page. It will be updated fairly frequently on the importance of why it is important to be counted. I'm going to turn the silver now to Mr. Vando, who will talk a little bit about our working meeting last Thursday.
Okay, so last Thursday, we had our second City Council Open Working Meeting. We talked about some issues that the council is being asked to consider. But some of the feedback we've been getting now from the last two meetings is the way working meetings are structured under the Open Meetings Law is there's a couple of times during open meetings. But we recognize that there are times that people do want to provide input, and normally that's not here during Good Welfare. But I think what we're going to be trying, we may schedule, we're probably going to schedule sometime here in the next couple of weeks, we're going to try a sort of a working meeting that where you can come in and talk to the council internally and discuss issues that are concerned. Sort of like the meet the City Manager type event, but we'll do that with the City Council as well so people can come in and talk issues with the City Council upstairs. So we'll probably be announcing that date soon. Just keep an eye open. We'll put it on the City Facebook page and stuff. And with that, let's move on to the agenda.
Okay, the first item tonight is a publication for local law enforcement advising the charter of the City of Long Beach drawing City Manager.
Okay, so I just cleaned this some last meeting about Auburn Dentists. Not everyone may know it. So what this is doing is Long Beach switched from a mayoral system of government to a City Council system of government in 1939. Part of the problem is they never changed the city charter. They went in and wherever it said mayor, kind of lined it out, wrote City Manager, and then even got bored of doing that a little while. So the charter still says mayor all over the place. So the charter does not reflect the fact that we have a City Council, and it's a City Council that's sort of, you got the residents at the top, then the City Council, who are the sort of the voting representatives, and then you have the staff underneath that. So what these changes are doing is they're basically reflecting how the city is actually structured right now. It's bringing, it's starting to, and this is not fixing everything. This is just step one. There's a lot of other things. There's stuff in the charter that hasn't happened in decades. So we're starting to take steps here. The changes were done by the law firm, Ingraham and Smith. They went through the charter, and so this was done by them. And we have a representative from Ingraham and Smith here that I guess can come up and if you want to discuss a little bit just about what you did, if some people understand what we're doing here.
Good evening. John Brooks. We received a direction through the City Council through Mr. Vando.
Can you hear anything?
Is that better? Hello?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry. We received a direction of the City Council through Mr. Vando for modification of the charter, specifically with reference to appointment of the various appointed officials that run the city. Currently, the city charter reflects that the City Manager makes appointment to the various positions for the City Council, various of the essentially administrative structure of the city. And the modification that we were directed to consider and prepare in the Charter amendments was the modification of that authority from the City Manager to the City Council. And in essence, these changes embody, will embody the authority of the City Council not only to appoint the City Manager, but to appoint about eight or nine of the leading administrative positions within the city. Those positions are characterized, and by the way, the charter previously characterized them as appointed officers. It continues to characterize them as appointed officers. The personnel code uses a different terminology references that they are exempted. Which we think, reading both of those documents and other documents that were made available to us, that exempt employees are essentially the same group that are denominated as appointed, meaning appointed officers of the city under the city charter. So very simply stated, this Charter amendment shifts the authority of appointment and termination to the City Council from the appointed City Manager. So in other words, from an appointed official to the popularly elected City Council that's elected and responsive, responsive obviously to the citizens. That's essentially what the charter requires.
Other questions from the Council?
Mr. Brooks, in order to make an appointment or a termination, what is the process that the City Council has to follow?
Well, overarching, any local law is the United States Constitution. The United States Constitution requires, is a relatively famous case, Madam Blaumberg, which suggests that even appointed officials who hold their position at the wheel of the appointing authority are entitled to elemental due process. So a process that would apply, and this is no change from what we currently have, relative to the termination, for example, of the City Manager. That individual has to be given an opportunity to learn why the exercise of the actual appointment is going to be terminated, have an opportunity to respond. Then the City Council would make the determination as to termination and non-termination. Appointment, of course, is a different process where you, I suspect, in some instances, seek a search to replace some of these individuals. You certainly would be free to obtain that, obviously, but I dare to take the recommendation of the City Manager to the board, and the board will make the determination, of course. Just tell them you do that all over the board, say that, that simple process. When you're dealing with a position as high and as important as City Manager for other chief employees, that would be the process. And currently, it's not so. Currently, the City Manager makes that.
I'm not familiar with that. An actual employee requires an explanation for their termination?
Well, because they're public employees. They're not...
Okay, so that's a private...
An actual employee in the private sector means that you'd like to call them their top. In the public sector, you can still terminate for the color of their time to get a telephone.
And how much time do we have to give?
Reasonable period. There's nothing written...
No strict requirement? No, no strict requirement?
Correct.
So in effect, what we're doing, maybe to put it in plain English, is what's going to happen now is the handful of leadership in key positions in the city, the city manager, the City Council, who are the elected representatives that are accountable to the voters, will be selecting that, that handful of leadership positions in the city and positions at city manager. So that's, that's the simplified version. So with that, I guess we'll open it up to public comment.
Thank you. My name is Peter 25 West Broadway. Let me just say that I'm really happy that this resolution is coming up because this is the first step of improving this city's finances due to a lot of horse trading that's been happening here. So I just want to say that, you know, I love America and thinking about this resolution, saying the pledge of allegiance is here today. I love America so much, I want to marry America, and I married America. I have a bunch of documents saying that I will pledge allegiance to it, and if there's a draft, I'll go to war on behalf of it. And this is a moment that cannot be underestimated in our democracy. It's taking the power to the elected City Council. So I just want to show my support and why this is really important. First, the City Council is, is voted. This is about democracy. We, voters speak, the majority rules, and democracy is so fragile, shouldn't be underestimated. So by taking the power away from the city manager to appoint everybody else under it, while the power should rely in the elected City Council, I think is extremely important to improve the city's finances. Second, the elected, the appoint, if the City Council appoints these people, they will be beholden to, to the council. Now, some people I have heard, the negatives of it could be, oh, but maybe the City Council is elected by the party and the party is going to tell the City Council who to vote for, who to put in those positions. But let me tell you something. Every two years, we get to elect people in the City Council. There's nothing better. Every two years, if one of you are doing something wrong that we don't like, we can vote you out. And I know it's every four years for some and every two years for others. And I find that extremely, it makes my, puts my mind at ease that the people will have control of their own city. Second, this is about really about taxes. Because if we keep our taxes in check, if the representatives are elected by the people who want their taxes lessened, we'll have less corruption and we'll have less horse trading and people will be beholden by the residents themselves who elected you to represent us and represent what we want. So I just want to say that this, this resolution is extremely important because it's about our democracy. And it's, it's so pleasing to me and I think hopefully a lot of residents that the people that I elected to represent me and the people that, people elected to represent them now will get a chance to see that go through the entire city. So it's really important, very important matter that everybody should get a chance to talk about.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Kirkland?
Mr. Kirkland, Long Beach. I may have missed something in the, in the intro, so I'll add this. By appointing the, the city manager in his current position, who will be reporting to the city manager? You're creating other department heads, I would assume, according to this layout.
No, the reporting structure effectively stays, the other commissioners and things like that still report to the city manager. But effectively what happens now is the City Council acts now of the, like, the term of final say. And probably a good example now is like, there's a search underway for the cooperation council. The city manager has a committee that, of people, they're reviewing candidates. And when that's done, they're going to recommend a list of finalists to the council. And, you know, they'll review and confer with the city manager, decide who the best candidate is. And that's, and kind of process will work. It'll be sort of partnership.
All right. My concern is that, you know, if you had a department heads reporting to five people, you know, they can't serve more than one man at a time. It would have to be one person that they would.
No, the city manager is still the senior.
So he would be giving the direction.
The senior executive in effect, operating, running the day-to-day operations of the city.
Okay, so you would just be appointing who they are and he would then be giving them the guidance and directions.
Correct.
Okay, that, that works. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm ready to get started.
Scrolling in the background, please.
Okay, louder. Is it good? Okay. So I'm a little bit confused about this. It's my understanding, because we're a city council with a city manager, that the city manager is the CEO of the city and provides the day-to-day operations. And that the City Council is really a two-part. It is part legislative, because you approve all the contracts and positively look at all of them. And you're also a board of directors. My, is that a decent understanding of how it works?
Close to this analogy.
Okay. So from what the other gentleman said, your answer's taken. Is that the city manager, and we need to operate with a city manager because this gentleman is holding down a lot of jobs here. And he's not there, he's not there to give orders to the city. Because you need somebody that you can just call up at five o'clock in the morning and say, my street has been plowed. Of course, we don't need it this winter. So anyway, is his job going to be to vet whatever candidates they are that are applying for whatever position, for example, Chief of Police? And then come to you and say, listen, here are the two finalists, or three finalists, whatever it is you decide. And then as a group, you're going to decide, is it going to be majority rule? Is it going to be unanimous? And who is it that this person actually reports to? Who is that person superior to?
That that person would report to the city manager.
Okay, what kind of authority does the city manager have over this person?
The same authority they have now.
So I think the point is that you're saying that we function like a board of directors and that the city manager is the CEO.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That is consistent. And traditionally, when you have a high level of position within an organization, sometimes the board of directors will actually weaken those reports, those folks that report to the CEO. That's exactly what we're doing here. So we are, we are in step with your, with your wishes.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Listening.
John D., Long Beach. I think this is a step in the right direction for my city. The only thing that I'm concerned with is accountability and in terms of process and whether or not the work is completed by these people that are assigned. How, how are we going to know what the, what the accountability is? I mean, they, they report to the same entity. Is the city manager going to report to you the performance of these people?
Yes.
And is it going to be an opportunity to ask these people to depart if they're not performing the way they're supposed to perform? Or is that just solely in the?
Well, you, you're sort of addressing a slightly different issue. You're talking about kind of performance evaluation.
Well, I'm talking about the fact that you're now involved in the executive level of the city and who's going to be in the leadership spots. People in leadership have to perform a certain way, just, just like, like Secretaries of State and different people that are suggested by the president, awarded by the, confirmed by the senate. Right, suggested by the city manager, confirmed by the City Council. But they leave at the, be asked the president. Here you go, a different situation. You know, it's, you know, I just, it's a great start. Ultimately, what you're looking for is accountability so that we don't waste money, that we save money and become more efficient. And so having this process is nice to have, you know, a consensus of who's going to be running our city and how it's going to be run. But where do we have the, what process is going to be in place to make sure that what we're asking these people to do are actually done and in effect, there's been time to match?
There is nothing that's changing as far as the direct reports will report to the city manager who reports to the council. We, instead of being held captive by a city manager who makes decisions without the council executives, will have to work for us. Yeah.
All right, well, just, just think that you need to make sure that you have, I know that he reports to you.
He or she?
Listen now.
Hello, Karen, pretty good.
Yes.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm very pleased. Thank you for taking it and considering her. Karen Thomas, I've been before, sir. Let's get that out of the way. Okay, my concern is the language, the highlighted language. I, I now understand from other people's questions what you're going to change and I understand the reasons why. But the, since the city manager shall be appointed by City Council, all other officers shall be appointed by the City Council. I think you should say with the approval of the City Council. Because you're not doing all the background, you're not doing all the research. The city manager is still going to do the research and get back to you with possibilities. And then you're going to look them over and interview them or not and decide. So you still have a decision role, but I, but that's not what this language says. This language says you are going to appoint the officers. And that you are going to have the authority to fire people. So I think the language just needs to be made with the approval of the City Council. Obviously, the City Council is hiring the city manager, so you have to trust this judge, their, their, his or hers, judgment somewhat, and to bring you good prospects for the position. That was how we minded the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Sanindo. First, I heard from the back with some issues, so if you guys can lean a little closer to your microphone. So I actually have a few questions. First of all, is this Office of Consumer Protection a new, a new organ? It's still in there? Anything going to change with that? Only because the only difference is creation? Is it going to be like?
It's something that existed already in the charter.
And it's been since taken over, that role has been taken over by the Academy Council. That's something that was from the charter at the back of the seventies.
Okay. You know, speaking in with what other people said, I do think there is a little bit of confusion of how deep the, the City Council can be involved in the day-to-day management or micromanagement or lack thereof. So there could be some sort of clarification on that. We're just understanding, nothing is changing, right? Besides the fact that all elected officers of the city, right, I'm sorry, all appointed officers of the city are going to be appointed by the recommendation of the city manager or by the committee of the City Council?
Well, the city manager will be part of the process, but the ultimate, whether, whether you call it approval, approval still means appointment. So, you know, it's, what it's doing now is it's now having a direct line of, in effect, the elected records, the voters are now going to hold directly accountable to people that's the leadership of the city.
Okay, that's good. I mean, I think it's important that the City Council can be now held accountable for the decisions of the hierarchy. I think the spirit of that is good. My only concerns with is maybe there may be a chance for an overreach. I'm going to make sure that doesn't happen. I know at, speaking from experience, the school level, the school district, we have an appointed officer in charge in the school. And we approve every single appointment, termination, probation, seniority, change in grade, and even stipends at a public resolution. Same thing goes with the library. We do every termination, even accepting a retirement happens by public resolution of the council or the board of trustees. I believe in Nassau County, it's similar to the point that they have an elected public officer, but they do public hearings for their policymakers. Same thing in County Hempstead. I think it's good to have the appointments and, and, you know, terminations and retirements at a public session. I think it's beneficial. Creates greater accountability for members of the council. The only thing I would ask is that if you can utilize the tool, the organizational chart, make sure it's clarified that everyone knows that everything is staying similar to the way it is, except now it's by resolution of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. And just one thing, if you don't come back up, just worth noting, we're, we're a bit of an odd, we're one of the few municipalities that doesn't have their legislative body approving the key leadership decisions. That's, that happens at county and other places, so.
One, one thing I've noticed that I do.
If you could pass it back.
I may not. If you bring in a person to lead the city, but he's a chief operating officer, a lot of times they want to bring their key to work with them. If the key doesn't work together and they come from different places, maybe avoid direction. Thank you.
Anyone else? And I see Mr. Dussler.
Hi, my name is Jack Dussler. I really wish I'd gone before us, but my comments are pretty similar. I just want to applaud the council's actions in cleaning up the charter code in order to make it more accurate, reflect the current reality of city operating. But, and it's always a buzz with me, I don't think you've gone far enough in placing safeguards in place that prevent the kind of rogue actions by the city managers such as me have seen over the past few months. I understand the city manager's charge of the day-to-day operation of the city and that it is neither wise nor possible, but accountable. Micromanaging the decision that city manager makes. But I think that certain actions, particularly those involving personnel actions, should require council ratification before being, being funded. This should apply common to what San said, to all personnel actions, hiring, promotion, grade change, terminations, and most importantly, decisions affecting the probationary status of certain employees. As things stand right now, the city manager has unfettered discretion to waive, shorten, modify, or declare concluded the probationary status of certain employees. I think the council should have final say on all decisions on probationary status. And I know we're almost built today and you guys are probably dealing with a lot of different stuff right now. But as there's already been some turnover in the city workforce and I'm sure will likely come since the election of a new council, this, this item takes on added urgency. I think you guys would consider it and sort of fast track it.
And let me add this too. You know, this is a little bit of a double-edged sword because not only of shifting accountability to the members of the council, this has also shifted the accountability to the voters as well. Because now it's given the voters kind of a direct pipeline to the city leadership. And if you elect the wrong people, you may get the wrong leadership. So it will be even more incumbent on people to pay attention, get out and vote, and make your, your wishes.
your wishes known. So I think this one's pegging easy.
Hello, council.
Well, not pegging any, six, you'll have to sleep.
Well, like I said the last time at the meeting, this is probably the greatest thing since apple pie. And we know over the years, many years, go back a little, that, you know, the city manager has gone hard while, signing things, puts it into debt, and basically, basically, he can do that. He can do anything. He's like a mayor. And there was a lot of debt came from that, over many managers, and in a recent year and a half. So this is a blessing, but, and there's always a but. Now that the ultimate power, like, the city manager had the ultimate power, he could be fired, he could be suspended, you know, if it really goes crazy, right? But that would be easy to get rid of. But now it's not going to be easy to get rid of you guys. Not you personally, of course. I mean, you were the guys that's going to save the city, and I know you are, but in time, there could be a problem. I'm sure bad politicians are figuring it out already, believe me. And what would happen is two of you guys lose, you get other people in, now you have three, it can't shift very quickly in a few years. Now, the problem is that you guys, basically, to be removed, can only be by the governor of New York, as you know, as you checked your charter, the only one that can remove you, remove you is the governor of New York. And it doesn't say he shall remove you, he may remove you. So over many years, the only one that was removed was removed by Franklin Delano Roosevelt in 1932, a sheriff, an elected sheriff in New York City. Next was Jimmy Walker. The governor had him on the ropes. Franklin had him on the ropes, and he was going down, and Jimmy Walker basically resigned. Only one, Alicia. So what does that tell you? Governor ain't doing nothing. So if we got bad, the three bad council people here were screwed. They had the ultimate power, cannot be removed. So what I'm saying is, in all your greatness and wisdom, you better figure out something to shake the governor off and have some kind of a petition referendum to get rid of bad council people. Otherwise, believe me, bad politicians are figuring it out already. One of your times gets sick, this happens, that happens, what happens? We get stuck with three people who have the ultimate power? Well, anyway, I'm sure you guys can figure that out. Thank you.
Robin Donovan, Eighth Clark Street. As you are in the process of revising the city of Long Beach Charter, I would like you to change the language. They them is a standard accepted gender neutral pronoun, and he/him and he/she is archaic and exclusionary. Using he/she as dated and they them is more inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments? Or once, or twice, onto the next lady. I'll wait, and I guess we'll, we'll close the public hearing, and there'll still be comments that could be made at the.
The resolution portion, do we have a?
This is a local law, and as such, if we're going to make any changes to the text here, we're going to have to renotice the slot and do that for you. That's why we wouldn't necessarily disputable, but we would probably make changes. We're set. That's just not a local motion because of the notification requirements. Ordinance is a law. The ordinance is.
Okay. So your ordinance is open, but then public hearing.
We're making a change, or any changes to it. We're going to, we're going to, no. Does that make sense? So, thanks, no problem. With that, our next public hearing is ordinance, medical licenses of city of Long Beach government.
Okay, this is essentially just a part two of the same thing. So the first one was specific to the city charter, so those of you that don't speak government administration, we have both a city charter and then we have a city code of ordinances. And there's a lot of overlapping information in the two. So what we just talked about was the updates to the charter. Now what this is, is the updates to the code that go along with the changes to the charter, though in this particular case, this also covers all the boards and commissions, the city has lots of boards and commissions. For example, you know about, most people know about the zoning board, but there's a bunch of lesser-known boards, there's been, we have a number of boards that have been dormant for quite some time, like we have an ethics board that's been dormant for quite some time, zones are going to be getting started, but, so what this is doing along the same vein is now also the city council will be appointing the members to all the boards and commissions. So with that, any questions or anything to the council members? Okay, any questions from the public?
I don't have a question, but I think I would like to point something out, and that's important. Again, we elect the city council, and I think diversity is extremely important in representation, and we have some diverse candidates here in city council now, thank goodness, but still not enough. And I think that the more diverse we get, the better representation we get, and at the same time, allowing each, allowing the city council to appoint the committee members and appoint the members of the other committees that you're, we're going, you, Long Beach already has, will also reflect on the diversity of our city councils. So it's really important that people are represented, not just the council itself, but in the committees itself. You know, equality is an extremely important value in this country, that we are all seen equally under the law, and having that diversity flow through from the city council towards the committees will be very beneficial to this city. Thank you.
As far as the commissions and boards, I see a lot of community faces here that I've seen when I was city manning, in the seats there. I think it's just as important to have good committees and boards, commissions and boards, because I personally look to you as an extension of this body. Stuart said, and forgive me if I mispronounced the last name.
My name.
Diversity. We have in the charter something called the planning board. It hasn't been used, and that's one of my hopes, is the planning board, because we have many different areas of the city. We have a lot of different civic groups in the city. We have East End, West End, West Home, and you've heard the Beach of Ed, the Shore Road, a lot of different issues with a lot of different opportunities. It's my hope for and goal is to ignite and excite all of you to get involved, not only where you are there, not only in your civic, but be a part of this, and I'm not saying you're not part of the solution, but we want you to be part of the solution, because I think over time, if you have pride and ownership, that your opinion matters. That's important to me, and I think collectively with the council, so, thank you, please. It's been a privilege to say that.
Any other comments?
I just want to say that in terms of the boards and commissions, that's the pipeline for us to get new, new members of this community involved in local government, so that we have more diversity on this council. Thank you.
Okay, what else? Okay, I'll give it to the rest of the agenda. Oh, close the public hearing and leave the orphans.
Okay, so off to the regular calendar, I am the one who's resolution authorized the filing of that application to the county council for books, voting, taking a community development program entitled one of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, entitled two of the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990. For inclusion in the city's community development program through the 2020, 2020, 2026 year, this item is qualificationally, here it will be held March 3rd at 7:00 P.M. I am the one who's resolution authorized the approval of a list of eligible volunteer firefighters to 2019 length of service award program, LoSa service credit.
I'm assuming Mr. Cameron is going to address this one?
Good evening. In 1993, my public referendum, the city of Long Beach instituted the LoSa, which stands for length of service awards program for a volunteer firefighter. The city council then approved that and started the program. Every year, members have to obtain by the state law 50 points to be eligible for that year's worth of credit. Last year, we were notified by our auditors that, the way the general municipal law is written, that actually the legislative body every year has to approve those points before they're submitted to our company for processing. So we began that last year, this is the second year. On the agenda items, I believe it was eighty-seven members that made their 50 points on the others here. A lot of members made a lot more than 50 points, there's nothing extra for it, it's just you have to make the 50 points. The points are obtained through making fire calls, EMS calls, drills, training, miscellaneous events like funerals or graves, standbys, and there's maximums in each category by state law, this is all run by state law, that people can make, get those points in those categories. I think with your backup, you receive a printout of every member and their points, even the ones that didn't make the 50 points. Our attendance system is automated, it's the best attendance system the city of Long Beach has, it's dumb light finger scanner, and that's how people get the majority of their credit. We do have paper forms for certain instances, for different classes and different events that have to be signed off by a officer or a chief before submitted for credit.
Can you just explain to people, so, somebody that served for a long period at high and gets X number of years of 50 points each year, when they retire, what happens?
So the way the program works, and the city of Long Beach keeping its status quo, we have the lowest payment of any fire department on Long Island. When it was instituted, you needed maximum 20 years service at $20. So the total anybody can get at age 65 after 20 years is $400 a month. Most departments now are at 800, New York State just recently actually raised it to state law to max out now to 1,200. We're still at 400, and you have to be at age 65 after 20 years of active service. It takes five years to become vested in the program. There is also a death benefit offer beneficiary, if somebody passes away before paying, they're 20 years as long as they're vested in the program.
Is it 20 years or 50-point years, right? So it's not just 20 years of.
No, somebody, if somebody, if you look on the list and somebody didn't get 20, 50 points this year, they did not get credit for this year.
What is the funded status of this plan?
The plan is very well-funded, I supplied Councilman Delory with our fiscal, oh, I believe we're about 86% funded, which is on the higher side of a lot of the programs that are out there. It's administered through hometown firefighters out in Suffolk County, they do a majority of the LoSa programs on Long Island.
And what is the cash contribution that the city makes each year?
It, it goes up and down depending on the actuarial, somewhere usually between 90 and 120,000 depending on the actuarial calculation.
Right, I think, being a LoSa trustee in the village where I am, I, I do agree that there have been volunteers that go well above and beyond 20 years of service, somebody who's 20, 21 or 22. I, I, I wish we were better conditioned right now, because I knew they did it early.
So what's the shortfall in our plan? What, how much is the 14% shortfall? The funded status, you said, is like.
Right, yes, it's no, no plans at the present time, because it's ongoing plan or are 100% funded, because we have members coming, members going, members obtaining their time and taking, whether it be their payout or their $400 a month check.
You still have to, you still have to recognize the shortfall on the, on the balance sheet, so how much is that?
I don't, I gave Councilman Delory the.
Yeah, that's something that has to be reviewed during the budget season, and just so I can.
And it should be ready by now for, for that year.
It's an actual.
Exactly.
We, we have it for 2018, we don't have it for 2019 yet.
What is the shortfall in 18?
I, I don't have the paperwork.
Can I just say? Just so I clarify, there are some people that have zero or four, is that because they're no longer a volunteer firefighter?
They could be life members that no longer reside in Long Beach, they could be on permanent medical or.
Oh, when they're doing their service, but they're still, they could come back, because they're on the list.
Correct. Okay.
And just recognize the age.
And there's annual physicals that have to be passed every year as far as the final department.
Right, we're required by OSHA to perform an NPA physical on all firefighters, we do that yearly, both our paid and volunteer.
And I, and I know you do an actuarial annual report, as do we, we use the same strategy that you do hometown. I find it very good in that, talking about my daytime job.
Every year, once, once this is approved tonight, I submit it to hometown, they do the paperwork, and they actually come and meet with us and go over everything, and then everybody gets their year's worth of credit.
Any other questions? All right, any questions from the public?
Thank you, Commissioner.
We've got one.
Hi, David J. Dussler. I'm going to ask the council to hold the guidance, and I'll give you my reasons. I, I voted in favor of this law, show actors hired to the pay fight from back in 93. At that time, I thought providing small pension to volunteer firefighters was a good idea. I now know differently. Like just about everything else in the city is involved with this LoSa program, it has been corrupted. The start is the standard availability has worn it down to where most of these people on this list have contributed nothing to enhancing the safety of our community. Many are not certified security firefighters, few still have any level of emergency medical training, thus they are incapable. medical training, thus they are incapable of performing even the most basic functions associated with core responsibilities of the LBFDA, that is, right, providing that the emergency medical. There are people on this list whose eligibility has been established solely by attending meetings, drills, social functions, and parades. A member may obtain LoSa credit for the entire year without ever voting an emergency meeting and actually responding to a single call. This list doesn't reflect actual emergency responses, rather it reflects that a member has merely signed in after a call, sometimes hours after the call is concluded. It's also the matter of several city workers being on this list. It is against the law for city employees to double dip by taking LoSa credit for calls occurring during working hours. I complained to the Nassau County DA about this double dipping in the past, and the DA resolved my complaint by getting an agreement from the city, I don't know who, on the city's behalf, that would ban city workers from signing in for LoSa credit while on city time. Despite that agreement arrived at, I'm going to say, 2014, in resolution of my complaint, the illegal practice continues on a basis. I have many other reasons to doubt the accuracy of this list and the eligibility to determination contained therein, but as I limited the three minutes, I can't detail all to you here. I'll be happy to give you a basement for you privately, by email, or whatever else you choose. In the meantime, I urge the council to table the resolution until such time that the accuracy of determinations of these members' eligibility to this benefit can be verified and certified as lawful in progress.
I'd like to respond if I can. Number one, the majority of the people that Mr. Gussler is probably referencing are on this list that are already made their LoSa, they're like fifty-year members of the department, and they're back on our department to do other things except phone to calls, assisting with training, and doing other things around the firehouse and administrative duties. The New York State law does allow for that. I want to make mention that publicly, Mr. Gussler has hatred for the volunteer firefighters and the volunteer fire service. Whether Mr. Gussler likes it or not, seventy percent of the firefighters in the United States of America are volunteer firefighters, whether he likes it or not. So, that being said, New York State law was changed several years ago after Mr. Gussler's allegations to the district attorney's office, now allowing municipal employees to get LoSa credit while they are working for their municipality. But we'll be seeing, and we'll let the council or copy of it if they like.
Thank you.
Scott, one more thing, you would explain to the finger readers on calls, after fifteen minutes after the call response is over, nobody can sign in, right?
Right, the reader's closed after fifteen minutes.
Who again approves, you said, the chief, the four chiefs, correct?
As far as the finger, nobody, if there's a payment done, it's either done by the company officer or a chief officer. That's typically the training classes, people have to sign in for them, and that's monitored by the chiefs.
And where are all these reference tabs so that we can access them?
The department statistician has the sheets, everything else, the finger scanner is done on computer, I can print that for you. Similar to, everything here is either done by the finger scanner or entered on the paper copy.
And where are all the policies for this program?
Most of them in New York State law. The New York State law tells you how many points, what categories you can get the points in, and the maximum points you can get for each category.
And where can we get historical information?
Historical information on our program or on the law itself?
On our program, our points.
I can print out the last, how many years, if you would like.
You could probably put out the last inception, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, if you had to, possibly.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Dean?
I want to get into the politics of this thing. I'm only questioning if this is something submitted to the City of Long Beach or approved, there should be an accountability type of process that goes through law documentation to be submitted to the city, so they can review it properly, know that they have validated, and then improve, and you can give these people a right to what they're doing, and they don't have a problem here. So I would suggest that this type of information now, of how it is submitted, it should be submitted well before an evening like today, and reviewed, verified, like some sort of accounting, you know, process. And once that is done, then the city manager or whoever is at the badge of this thing here can say, this is done through the process, it's done correctly, and this is fine, and then you can vote on it, and then all sorts of discussion becomes something more and more to have. It's really the process, and it's really what we have to focus on. How do we get this, how do we get this data? How is it verified? How is it now humaned in the report? And how is it presented to you for verification?
Yeah. Okay. And Commissioner, correct me where I may be wrong. I don't know how often the City of Long Beach volunteers or commissioners oversee and tell them what the chief, how often the points are posted, and, for example, let's say you're in the ninety-one more of your annual season, and you see that you have forty-six points for each track. It gives the membership an opportunity to say, I really need to step up more to attend more meetings, drills, or because somebody's got a hundred and forty points, you know, there. I don't think most people that are volunteers pay that close attention to where I am forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, but there are instances where people need to know that, just for their own satisfaction. So the question would be, is this list posted somewhere maybe once a year, twice a year, where the membership would know where they stand?
It is posted by New York State law, it is posted once a year in the firehouse. People are given a thirty-day opportunity to appeal their points if they haven't reached the 50 points. This year, we had no appeals, typically we don't, I mean, it's pretty cut and dry. As far as the process, we have a computer program by Alpine Software, it's called the Redware Program, it's a firefight, a fire management system. The LoSa portion of that is approved by the City of New York Controller's Office, and it does all the calculating. And that, that's the process. Somebody's standing their finger for a call, they get credit for it, and then the report calculates everything at the end of the year, or whenever you run the report.
And you really can't get more advanced than that system in place today. There's nothing to, I, I know that, because that's where we would like to be, where we can stand and have those reports ready. Councilman Dussel, I don't know if I can answer your question, how often do members, can they review where they stand, and is it posted for the general membership?
We just wanted to make sure that everyone was getting what they're entitled to, and if they, if we could, so the country, if we only come down once a year, could we get instead of a meeting, where if so, could we get a little bit more?
Can, well...
Just the information.
Right, so what typically happens is at the end of the year, the report's printed, I post it, this year I posted it on January eighth, giving them thirty days to appeal. Once that appeal was done, I then supply the report to Mindy for the agenda item. I mean, I would be glad to give you guys the report when I post it prior to any appeal, so you have it ahead of time.
I think moving forward, that would be for long-term guarantee. I think you should, as well as far as... Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, just, the data point, just so people understand what we're talking about, the list Commissioner Cameron gave us with all the volunteer firefighters, there's a hundred and thirty-six in total, and eighty-seven of them had more than, had 50 points or more, so about sixty-four percent of the course, you know, had their 50 points of rate, so will be a credit for this year. Norrie's close. Norrie, yep. Norrie's close, right?
He said something about the state.
Norrie's close, sorry. Nora Egan.
Nora Egan, I don't have a comment on the issue, just if the council could speak up, it's really difficult to hear in the back. Thanks.
Hey, any other comments? Okay.
Item one is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application to the county of Nassau for the purpose of undertaking a community development program entitled one of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 amended, Title II of the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990 amended, for the inclusion of the city's community development program for the 2020-2021-26 year. Would you just move the option to this item?
I will, and I was just, a brief comment. If you are a nonprofit in the City of Long Beach, not, wait, wait, nope.
You can do that when you vote.
Okay, yes.
Move the second.
Yes.
I'll vote with that, yeah.
Yes.
That's on the justice.
Yes. Now that I've come here. I just want to make sure that everybody that has a nonprofit in Long Beach, notice that there's money available, and they should make sure they get to the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's close to the beginning.
I vote yes, I have one request, that we see a multi-year plan for this program going in the out years as required by the New York City Office of Controller. Is that possible? My name affects our regular budget, right?
No, it doesn't.
I'll be giving, I'll give the city budget with available funds here, back to the forty-first year, for the twenty-sixth. Yeah, it's at the forty-sixth year. If it'll please the council, I can put together a presentation on the CDVG funds and wherever we are, from back to the forty-first year, we're going to be applying for the forty-sixth year this year, but we do have available funds that goes back to the forty-first year, and I would help, let's give a budget breakdown of the whole lot.
Thank you.
President Fennell?
Yes.
Item two is a resolution authorizing the approval of all volunteer firefighters for 2019 length of service award program, LoSa service credit.
I will.
I will.
I just, thank, yes.
I was a military police officer, I know firsthand what it takes to volunteer, it's not easy, when you come home, to get up, leave your family, leave your friends, go out, call night, and it really shows care in our city. I want to thank Commissioner Cameron's, the fire chiefs, and all volunteers for their service, dedication, commitment to our city, and I will, yes.
Councilman Dussel?
Yes. Yes.
I just want to echo what Councilman Mandel said. While everybody's running out of the burning buildings, you guys are running in. Thank you.
The manager's person that we're for, you can follow him on Senate Court, we have your motion to close the meeting.
I will.
I will.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I just have this very, in the paper, that we get the...
Good gentleman.
It's on the by 표, so... Right here. So I don't know if you have a, I don't know if you have a condition there.
All right, folks, I think everyone knows that this drill has been well paid, you get three minutes, please keep it civil. And... All right. And we have Kevin Riley.
Good evening, Kevin Riley, Vice President of Long East Bay.
Please speak up.
All right. I come here with a dire warning about the renewed interest in approving and passing the comprehensive plan, and it's outlined for changing large lots in the city zone. I'm limited in time tonight, so I'll only reference one example, and January 2018 update of the comprehensive plan, on page four of the actual letter, amend the city zoning ordinance to establish a transit-oriented, city-centered zoning district with a maximum building height of six stories. So what's so bad about that? A precedent has been set by lawyers for South Nassau Mount Sinai. They used a process called the Dr. merger that allows adjacent lots to share the same zoning if they are owned by the same person, corporation, that. South Nassau and Mount Sinai then went to the Long Beach zoning board to appeal and apply to change the zoning of the residential lots that they acquired after sanding to allow construction of an office building. The zoning board agreed against the objections of the neighbors and silence from the city. Keep in mind, this is not a use there, this is an actual change of zoning. The lawyers for the hospital, Harrison Beach, brag about how they use Dr. merger, a process that they themselves describe as historically used to prevent properties from being subbed up. This is actually part of their website. They use this process to effectively force their out-of-place office building into a residential neighborhood. This shady loophole that went wide correctly gives developers a way to selectively rezone connecting lots anywhere in Long Beach. Again, what's the big deal? Well, a building owner on Park Avenue may buy the property right behind her building, say, on West Wall, and using the Mount Sinai precedent would be able to make sure that the owner can use the two lots to build a six-story commercial building that goes from Park Avenue right back to West Wall. This right, change the zoning commercial, from zoning from residential to commercial to build this new six-story lot, would have no say from the city, from the residents, or anyone, because as long as they kept it to the new seven, a six-story zoning, it wouldn't be a problem. Think about the comprehensive plan, it has zoning changes that are across Long Beach, West Wall, you're vulnerable, East and West Chester, you're vulnerable, all the homes adjacent to Beach Street in the West End, you're all vulnerable, both sides of Long Beach Boulevard, all of these areas have been selected in the comprehensive plan to be rezoned. If the results of a Supreme Court decision to uphold the zoning order or its awful ruling is left unchallenged, the City of Long Beach will have created case law that promotes the collection of lots for the sole purpose of bypassing existing zoning laws.
Kevin, I think you had a crap on me, Tom.
One more sentence. We need you guys to help. We have no choice, we are going to fight this, but the city cannot remain silent on this, regardless of anything else, we must take action. We have no choice, we are gonna fight this, but the city cannot remain silent on this, regardless of anything else, we must take action.
And, uh. Captain Levine.
What do you think, Captain Levine, State Street in Long Beach?
Can't hear you.
All right, I'm glad, as residents of the city, we all deserve to feel safe in our homes. But the residents of East State Street and East Bay Drive currently do not feel safe in our homes. As many people in my neighborhood have explained recently, the former Long Beach Medical Center abandoned seven years ago after sanding continues to preside over our homes, gathering mold and filth and who knows what else inside and outside that building. The situation became worse last week when thousands of gallons of water were pumped at the medical center's basement. There was so much water, it covered half of the five-acre property owned by Mount Sinai. It flowed over the bulkhead into Reynolds Channel, and it flowed into our streets and into our storm drains. Residents called DEC, the EPA, and the building department. I saw a catch headline today that said the water was not contaminated, but my neighbors and I, and many other Long Beach residents, are skeptical. We would like to hear more than opinion, we'd like to see a written report on the contents of that water. If anyone needs samples, they are available. The residents are looking to the city council for help, so we can once again feel safe in this neighborhood. We're also looking to the city to stand up for us against the powerful moneyed institution known as Mount Sinai South Nassau, who feels they can do anything they want in our neighborhood. The owners of this organization have proven one thing, they are not good neighbors. Although Mount Sinai boasts in full-page ads about having four hundred million dollars to invest, they have refused to knock down the monstrous life of hospital overshadowing, shackling our neighborhood. They say they don't have the funds. They have manipulated the one-family zoning designation to plan a medical office building in the midst of our homes. And now they have cast more fear in the neighborhood through this recent flood. A week after this event, we still have not heard or received an apology from Mount Sinai. How's that for a good neighbor? I ask the council now to use your influence with Mount Sinai, have them tear down this rotting building, which will only cause more problems going forward. And have them build the so-called pavilion closer to the bait fund area away from our homes. Please show us who is in charge here, the self-serving Mount Sinai South Nassau, or the governing body of this city elected by the people you promised to represent.
Irene. Can you say it?
Uh, under Commissioner Kevin's, give me the muppet. When, when this happened, uh, my understanding is the, that the commissioner sent an inspector and a police officer out there. Uh, so I guess he may have some information on what they discovered and what's, an update on what's going on.
Okay.
So that last Wednesday evening, uh, we were notified about this situation going on at, uh, the old hospital building. Inspector Schu, Lieutenant DePomm, the police department went there. Uh, they smelled the water, they looked at the water, and whether right, wrong, or indifferent, Inspector Schu actually tasted the water, so he began, but he's still here. Uh, he, that evening, he called the County Hepset Bay Constables to oversee the runoff into Reynolds Channel. Uh, they met him there first thing, uh, Thursday morning, as well as a representative from South Nassau Engineering, the pumps were shut down. Uh, DEC was notified, community County Hepset Bay Constables, they took the lead on this, and DEC now has it. South Nassau hired a private pesting company, uh, they sent the proposal to the DEC who approved it. Uh, the DEC felt there was no hazard with the water. Unfortunately, uh, it was a lot of water. This goes on throughout the city of Long Beach, anybody that has a basement and has a pump, knows that they pump water out of their basement. This is a daily basis, depending on the high tide, uh, noon tide, obviously, this is a lot of water. And it caused an issue. South Nassau should have been a little more forward, I had this discussion with, uh, Councilwoman McGinnis, that they would have been nice if they gave us a heads up, and this is a problem, maybe we could have worked with them to have a solution instead of becoming a problem. As far as the existing building, uh, we scheduled a meeting, uh, next week in the city manager's office with South Nassau over that building and over the issues going on with the property, what we'd like to see, what they're planning on doing, and obviously, we'll report back to this board, and like, you know where we are, and obviously, we will take direction on how to proceed from that point.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, I just want to know if we can see the report on that test.
As soon as we receive the, the report from the test, I would be glad to share with anybody.
All right, mail in studio.
Thank you, um, perhaps that report could be posted online on the city's website. Um, I wanted to talk about three things. First, water infrastructure is still a problem, just because there's a new city council doesn't mean the water's not brown anymore. It actually is brown, actually, as a matter of fact, uh, a lot of my neighbors have continued to post on Facebook that the problem did not change. And again, we don't know whatever happened with the water and the E. coli since that July meeting, uh, that's about eight months ago. So I want to know, when is water infrastructure going to be put in, uh, on, will be put on the agenda?
You have two more questions?
Yes. Um, the second one is racial bias in, in policing. Um, I have a lot of friends in NYPD, and I love them all, um, I really respect, uh, our police officers, and they keep us safe, and I call them all the time because I'm always scared. So thank you, uh, police officers for, um, making the city safe. But I have heard from my neighbors who are ethnically diverse, um, that things happen in the city that was said to them and done to them that shouldn't have happened, I'm, I'm wondering if the city council is aware of that, and if the city council has any plans to at least provide racial bias training, and I think some sort of, um, sensitivity training would be beneficial to our police force. The third, and, um, just a note, I actually experienced one of the, um, uh, comments myself in the past. Um, the third one is a thing that comes full circle for me, because six years ago, my first city council meeting, I came here specifically for that, and nothing has been done, so hopefully you can do it now, since it hasn't been done yet. Um, so the crosswalks here, um, on Park Avenue from on Edwards, it's barely ten seconds, I have to run or walk really fast to get across Park Avenue, to take the train, or to get to the bagel store, and this is me with flats, not me in high heels, not me with my disabled brother, not a person in a wheelchair, and we really need to make this, um, this place more accessible for everyone, not just, you know, some people, for everyone. And while you're at it, if you could please add some accessible, um, wheelchairs on the, on the beach, I know we have like five beaches that are accessible, but I think it would really improve our, um, quality of life for not just our residents, which we are all getting older, America's getting older, we will all be older when, we're older. Um, but we need the accessibility, so I'd like to bring these items to the city council, and hopefully you can take up and run them, if you have any answers on that.
Okay, I guess we'll, uh, regarding the, the water burst, I mean, there's obviously, not that it's been impacted by groundwater, we're replacing a hundred-plus-year-old and eighty-five-plus-year-old water fountains. But as far as infrastructure, that's a capital issue which Commissioner Morando, uh, which Commissioner had on that question.
Again, part of the problem groundwater is really from old cast iron water mains, it's not a quality issue from the supply, it's a quality issue due to all the water mains. Years ago, when they put cast iron water mains and they weren't lined, they don't have lines, so water is a natural corrosive type of, uh, of solution. So it adheres to the pipes and it creates what's called the perpulation. When you get a disturbance in all the water mains, you get brown water. So to alleviate that, what we do is twice a year, we, uh, flush the system, we flush once a day for two weeks, and we flush the system in, uh, November, so that we can clear all the sedds from, from the mains. What we, we do every year, we do these two water main replacement programs, we replace all cast, we do a complete roads project, we replace the sewer main, the drainage, the water mains, those water mains today are replaced with ducted line pipe, which is cement lined. That cement lining protects the cast, the, uh, ducted line from developing the perpulation. Uh, there are fifty-five miles of water mains, uh, we can do, you know, uh, you know, maybe two projects of fifteen hundred feet a year. So rarely, barely able to afford to do a mile every year, but we do where we can. We do try to look for problem areas when we get repeat rusting water complaints. I have not heard, I, I've been up and down a few public works in the city manager's office, we had set up a list of calls coming in and tracking where the discolored water complaints are coming in from. I have not checked that recently, but, uh, again, I just remind everybody, it's opposed to putting on Facebook all public works with the date and the time, because it helps us determine when the call starts. Uh, for next year, we, this year will be taking down the standpipe, next year we have a, uh, nine-million-dollar budget for a new water tank, uh, which will add more storage, and also will have a lesser change in pressure gradient. The tanks that we have now, as they, as the water's used, the elevation low is much quicker, then you get a little pressure change. Having the tank be, have a more consistent high elevation water will stabilize pressure, which will also help with some of the discoloration, because it will stop some of the disturbances in the main. Uh, we also will be looking to, we have lost one well to a collapse from the end of Old Street, so we will be probably in two years looking for about two million dollars to fill in the well. So those are all the infrastructure projects, in terms of, uh, crosswalks and getting a course in ten seconds, those lights are on time by Nassau County, we'll reach out to them again to see if we can get them re-timed to get more time to, to cross the issue.
I can answer that question too. The street, it's actually designed that you actually have to stop. You're not supposed to be able to front across Park Avenue, you're supposed to go halfway, stop, make the light, and then go again. But there's a parking lot in the middle where you stop where cars go in. It's really dangerous. But that's, but that's the answer to your question, Nassau, it's a Ford design, but in reality, you're not supposed to be able to, like, queef all the parking, rather than.
I mean, there's, there's a drunk driver, and he goes over the median, I mean, that just feels so overwhelming, I'm sorry.
A Ford design, but that's the answer to your question, that's why you can't run across.
But, but also, um, I haven't reached out to the police board a couple of weeks ago, and if I'm correct, the county does monitor the length of those lights, because if I'm correct, I don't know, that light is about twenty-two to thirty seconds, because I, I know I sat in front of a stop and shop, and I timed it myself. So it's about twenty-two seconds, maybe it took thirty seconds to make the course.
I don't recall it coming over here long enough.
No, but I, I did it recently, because I wanted to see, and, because, Mylan, I, I've heard this from other people too, and I've listened to other people, and, yeah. Legislative board is available, um, to help us in this change of mechanism should be needed. I'm not saying it's not needed, but we don't know to, to, how it should be changed, is it five seconds to ten seconds, and what the impact of that is, and then on the X, but it's not. I'm not, I can tell you that, but at least it, it can be located.
Okay, and as the, the police one, uh, police commissioner has left, so we'll find out about that, and it's back to you on that note. So, Mr. Taganini again.
Oh, Councilor Dan. On Taganini, six two hundred streets. I have a message from your employees, a lot of them. They don't tell you, not personally you, but retaliation is really, uh, still unamended, whether you believe it or not. So they go to me, and you know what, this is what's going on. There's some testing, there's civil service tests that will be given on February twenty-nine. Employees have been calling me and saying, over a week or so, that the specifications and qualifications on these tests are not fair. That's a big word in civil service, not fair. Now, I'm not an expert, but I've been around quite a few years, thirty, and I read a lot of specs and a lot of qualifications, and what, what I read, it doesn't seem to be fair. Now, how fair is the civil service department? They have a history of working with corrupt politicians. I'm not calling you guys corrupt, but there were corrupt politicians here. And they go, these tests, you guys never knew about it. The new people up here, you didn't know, you didn't see them, you didn't know to see them, okay? So basically, what I'm saying is, uh, this, they said they would not put, another thing, let, let me move on quickly. They also said that the tests were not posted throughout the city's departments. I know they were on the website, but you got to post them in every department throughout the city, because you could have people, I'm just saying, in the water department, whatever, that did work in the water department, got transferred, that could take these tests, that's what that's about. So you have to post through every department, in the department. That wasn't done according to what I heard. So now, what I'm, what I'm asking the council to do, basically, is to look into it, and the city manager, of course, to have these tests looked at, possibly postponed in, in, in the future. It's not that hard to do. And what I would do, basically, knowing the present civil service commission, I would, I would get advice from the New York State Civil Service Commission. So, you know, in that, we have a bad history of bad postings, bad civil service stuff, and we just had one recently, one more minute.
No, you got a minute.
Not a minute.
With sentence, with the sentence.
We just had a job, you, I don't know if you know, the director of operations, that was null-void because of that. And that person got another test, and he's in his garage now as a sleep manager. So that test was null-void because it was not correct, rules were broken. Thank you.
I have a comment, a question. On that, um, as far as I'm concerned, as far as I know, Mr. Morando, is it correct that there's three tests being given on February twenty-ninth?
That's correct.
And how many people are taking each test?
Uh, all provisional employees that are in those positions.
And how many is in each, in each position?
One employee.
In each position?
Yes, and again, on special, particularly.
And how many women are taking the test?
Particularly on.
And how many white individuals are taking the test?
I, I don't know what, but particularly on the water, there's certain licensing requirements to take those tests, and in addition, we don't develop the test questions, the state develops the test questions and the timing of these tests.
Who, who reviewed, who reviewed the questions for the test? Who from the city reviewed them, and by what position?
We, we don't review the test questions, they're given to us by the state.
By what, but, but we deem the position, correct? Who, who deems the position?
The positions, there's certain positions that the state civil service requires.
The positions, there's certain positions that the state civil service requires a test be given for those positions. Okay? So, one, as an example, in the water, when Chris Fendel, no longer as the superintendent, we moved up to people with the most experience in the water division to take the position of water superintendent provisional and assistant water superintendent provisional.
Let's talk about, let's talk about the rec center instead. Talk about the rec center, because the water is immature. The water is.
The water I'm familiar with because I'm the one that does the water.
So we've got two white men taking a test in each rec, in each, well, how is that fair?
All right, we're gonna say whose twelve question, but I can't.
But I have no idea what's going on here. Why are these tests being given? You don't even know. Who can tell me?
I can, I can just say this, um, now I'm gonna answer this, not about the test, I was at the January Civil Service Commission meeting just to sit in on it because I wanted to understand the process. Around ten thirty that morning, I believe, maybe ten o'clock. After that meeting, which took about eight or nine minutes, I never asked for a complete minutes of every civil service meeting for the past year. Those minutes weren't given to me, did email, I believe, if I'm right, if I'm wrong, I thought I had shared it with the entire city council. The test, I, is on February twenty-seventh, I think?
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth. And the January eleventh was the application filing period.
And it's filed on December eighteenth, and it's under a previous administration.
Okay. I don't know who makes up the test, or what the process is, or why the test was given. All I wanted to do is understand the process and share it with the council members.
So what, why is this test being given? I still don't know.
Okay, so.
So why are they gonna have the test?
We will sit down, we will talk to the city manager, and we'll get answers to our questions. I have some questions myself, and.
I asked the questions and I didn't get answers. That's why I have to discuss it now.
Okay. Well.
I answered every email you sent today.
I guess that.
Except the one I asked for all provisional employees, I didn't get that one.
All right.
Right to this meeting, I guess? And I still don't know why these tests are being given, and why there's no minority that are taking these tests.
You want to say these are tests given for provisional employees? These are employees that were put into those spots.
By whom?
By whoever the city manager was at that time. The ones in the water department were recommendations from me at the time, from Trump, as, well, I was, this was done while I was in Mission Public Works, okay? And they were based on their qualifications and certain licensing requirements that the state health department requires they have.
So, some of the worst writing I've seen tonight so far, Sam Pinto.
Good evening, Sam Pinto.
I want to have a quick.
I didn't put a cap in school, sorry. Real quick, it's the request and the question. I got a mailer from National Grid that they're doing road service in the area of East Palm. It's Park Avenue, Broadway, and Beach Street. They're gonna be doing sewer lines. They were very responsive, actually, vendor were very responsive to the majority of my questions. My main question is, I know they've done work in the past, bringing these, not so long as cast iron, sorry, cast iron, some, um, East Beach Street is historically been concrete very recently, within the last few years. A lot of the road patches that were used for bringing sewer lines in after Sandy were with a temporary patch of blacktop and been replaced with concrete at the cost of the city. CSE did a great job doing that on my block, and homeowners did it themselves electively. I'm not finding out that the heart state may be changing after they do the gas service, where it's been historically strong concrete, that because of this, I guess, two-foot wide span running the entire length of the streets, being put in there, the temporary patch is gonna be flash off and then they're gonna rip up the top surface of the entire concrete and replace it with blacktop throughout. I spoke to the vendors there, and I made a phone call to TBW, and they said it's at the request, well, the vendors said it's at the request of the city. So just trying to keep it as a nice concrete as it is.
Yes. What we've done, we negotiated with National Grid, normally they would just need to make a trench repair, okay? And that would just be a two-foot piece of concrete put back in. They said, what we've negotiated over time, we'll see this a lot with the gas mains have been replaced, is they do the entire road for us curb to curb with a blacktop. They will not remove the concrete, they will scour it, put a two-inch overlay with blacktop, curb to curb in areas with the sore shoulders, they replace the sore shoulder also with, you know, gravel. So it's actually worked out very well financially for the city.
Is it possible that we keep the concrete for Beach Street where the rest of it, east and west, is concrete, and then they just fill in that trench with concrete to tell it up for years and looks nice and?
It's, it's not gonna look the same because they not gonna pay, they don't have to pay to, they have to replace whole panels, and they, they can't do that. We would have to be the ones to replace the panels. I can reach out and explain it if you want, but.
I hate to see a lot of people investing money into this, themselves fixing the patches, and the city did a great job, literally, preparing all the roadways, just rivet on that would be wasteful and possible, but thank you, I guess we'll talk on one more.
John Deere.
John Deere, Long Beach. Just wanted to, after two years, once again, bring up the fact that West Beach Street from New York Avenue to Nevada is no longer a street that, let's say, seventy years ago was designed when you were a ninety to a hundred percent summer community, where the only traffic was in the summer, but now a hundred percent residential year-round. The traffic flow on West Beach Street and the lack of traffic control, it makes it almost impossible for anybody to walk across the street. Any card to make a right or left turn on any street, whether it's a two-way street or one-way street, and even sometimes get trying to get out of it. When are we going to put traffic control on there so that we'll have safety for the residents that live on West Park and in the area, around, close to it? Every other street, every other street in Long Beach, every other residential street in Long Beach has traffic control at every single major corner. The only street that doesn't have traffic control at every major street is West Park from New York to Nevada. The random lights on there don't do anything to safety, because they're not coordinated, and even if they were coordinated, they still are not sufficient to know. We need stop signs or street lights at every two-way street. And, and the objections for mixing stop signs and the street lights is, as far as I'm concerned, moot argument, they're just something to avoid, they're making a decision, because it exists on, what here exists on, currently in Long Beach, on Beach Street, and it exists on every single street that approaches Long Beach Road. All those streets, there's a light and there's traffic lights, so, or the stop signs. So there's no reason why we can't have stop signs on that street. And, and if, and if the excuse enough for the stop signs is that people that drive through it, or people drive through it look like too, so that's another thing, that's just avoidance of doing something. At some point in time, we're gonna have a death there. We've had many, many accidents, we don't need traffic studies, we know, we have regular accidents and stuff happening down there for years and years and years. We need to do something.
Robin Donovan.
As you are in the process of revising the City of Long Beach Charter, I would like you to consider Long, Long Beach's past history of the perceived malfeasance of both politicians and employees. It is submitted that the City of Long Beach is large and has substantial problems and issues that an office of the Inspector General should be considered staffed by an appointed person. As the Inspector General and also staffed by several detectives assigned part-time for the City of Long Beach Police Department. This shall include jurisdiction over all aspects of our city, including the schools and excluding the Police Department, which is under the auspices of Internal Affairs. This will hopefully ensure the credibility of our government for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Bass.
Good evening, Pamela Bass Bay Drive. I just have two questions. I'm new to Long Beach, so I'm very, very happy here, but I do have two questions. On Magnolia Road, the Magnolia Boulevard, from North from Park up to the rec center, the road is really, really horrendous. And I also noticed that we got grant money to put in bicycle lanes, which I said, well, they're wonderful there, and they're not, there are bike lanes, but it's just so over road ring, then it's just all, you can't even see them. Also, when you go onto West Bay Drive, the road is also horrendous there, and I was wondering the park area that's on West Bay, if they could replace the lights because the faces are all broken up and it's actually wiring showing from there, so, if that could be considered, I appreciate it.
What was that?
Magnolia, going north, and then West Bay Drive.
So they'll send someone to check those lights on West Bay Drive. As for the bike lanes, is there a frequency which would be repainted or anything? All right, they'll take, they'll check those as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, June Chechter.
Good evening, June Chechter, State Street, Long Beach. Thank you, Mr. Kevens, for letting us know that you were having a meeting with Mount Sinai concerning their Duroitt Building. I'm here to talk to you, give you some information about that water release that occurred in our neighborhood. As reported by Patch, city and state officials said there's nothing to be concerned about. Building Department did examine the scene. I don't think that was good science to test it by tasting it. However, they said that there was no sheen on the water, and therefore they, they deemed it not contaminated. So I wanna know what tests were done to determine this. My neighbor Nadine Watts has, had called the Department of Environmental Conservation and left, had not gotten hold of somebody, but they left a message for her this morning. And the person who left the voicemail was Mr. Paul Harding from the DEC, and he stated that the water samples were being collected by the property owners and have not yet been collected or supplied to the DEC. That was as of eight fifteen this morning, Mr. Harding said this. Why are they collecting their own samples? It seems to me this is the fox guarding the chicken house. Why aren't we sending samples to PACE, an independent water testing agency? It takes about two weeks to get results, so I'm pretty sure that in one cursory, you know, cursory look, they couldn't say it was non-contaminated water. The basement of the former Long Beach Medical Center still holds equipment and a generator, electrical service, fire pump, the morgue was underneath the emergency room. What else is there down there? We don't know. Are there X, is there X-ray equipment? They, I have never seen this happen since Sandy, seven years. I've never seen them release water onto that acreage before. How long was that water there? Who knows? Was it a recent breach in the building, or was this rainwater that came from the roof and seeped down through the whole building? We don't know what's in there. The sheer volume of it was incredible. It covered at least an acre. It flowed over the bulkhead into the bay. If it was one inch, which it wasn't, if it was one inch over two acres, it would be twenty-seven thousand gallons. I think it was probably more like two hundred thousand gallons of water, at least, that flowed through that area. So again, Mount Sinai should be held responsible, and, and if something is, did come out of that, we do have samples still available, they should be held accountable.
So, okay, maybe time to, but I'm gonna quote Commissioner Kevens, what he told us in an email yesterday or today when we were asking about this. He now said he will be holding their feet to the fire.
That, that's good news. Great, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll be back with Angela Manjus.
Good evening, Angela Manjus. That's annoying that you're this close to these commissioners, being, I'm sorry, but I do feel the need to respond to something that Commissioner Keven has to say. Regarding my comments on the Lozat Plan, I know it's bad, but I believe you addressed it. The, my feelings for the volunteer, I'm sorry, my feelings for the volunteer life are quite relevant. That Kevens feels the need to try to discredit me by exalting my motives for raising the issues that I raised is telling. It's a page out of the Rob Agnes playbook, playbook that I hope the city has scrapped and that we have moved past as a city, but apparently those tactics remain after Mr. Agnes' departure. Now, that aside, what matters, what this, the Lozat Plan is about is recruitment and retention. It's not about, you know, getting guys who can come to a fundraiser, put burgers, or come to the firehouse and take care of busywork. It's about providing or helping the community to provide public safety. So it's not, it's not, listen, I understand the state law allows it, doesn't mean it's a good idea. And if the state changes the law regarding employees that take Lozat credit while the city time, news to me. Not for if I'm wrong about something, I doubt it will be the last, but that doesn't mean the city should allow its workers to walk away from their paid responsibilities in order to build and answer fire. Since I scribbled this down, somebody messaged me and alerted me to the fact that the law has in fact been changed, but only for fire calls and not EMS calls, and that's an important distinction. If those city workers are going on EMS calls while on city time, that is still illegal as of this moment in time. There's also a political component involved in this, and that's because the artificial inflation of the number of members on these lists serves to bolster the appearance that our city has a robust volunteer fire force, applied by volunteer firefighting force that it simply does not have. As Kevens did not dispute during my comments, many of those on this list do not respond to calls, and even if they did, many are not qualified to render the type of assistance that they're being asked to respond to. In summation, all I'll say is, I don't, I voted for this benefit, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with the city allocating the money for it. I'm simply saying that the tracking of how we spend it, who earns it, eligible for it, needs to be tightened up. The city, I think we can all agree, has a history of poor financial practices and poor financial tracking. All I'm saying, I know it's passed, done for this year, I really hope that before we come around, have a vote on this again next year, that we can implement some, some reforms to make sure that, that we can all have confidence that this is a valid earned benefit. And lastly, with regard to Commissioner Keven's statement about any of these members that are on that list already having effectively mapped out their benefit, these benefits change all the time. Councilman Lord already expressed a desire to perhaps increase benefit, and that's fine.
I'll do what happens to come.
The point is that, to suggest that there's no harm, no foul, because these members are continuing to sign in, the benefits can change. You guys could be asked to bring pieces of legislation tomorrow increasing the benefit. So it's not, not a whole thing.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for coming. Everyone get home soon.